And now please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll ask Andrea Sparks to read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thanks Andrea. And now we'll move on to information from individuals and delegations. This is an opportunity where those of you here tonight would wish to address the school board may do so. I ask that you please keep your comments three minutes or less, and Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have thirty seconds remaining and a red card when your time has expired. At that time, I will ask you to conclude your public remarks. Please also keep your comments respectful and constructive. We are all here with the goal in mind to help our students. Please also avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the school district. Personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels and not in a public forum. And finally, we provide this as an opportunity for public comment, but it is generally not a back and forth discussion, especially for items not on the agenda. But at times, we will try to help if we can with information before or after the meeting. But we do have to proceed with our board meeting and our agenda items. So with that, I invite anyone who wishes to address the board to please come forward and start by stating your name and your home address. If there's anyone here tonight? After I read all that? Well, that's what I get. I should've asked first, so. Alright, thank you very much. So then we'll move on with our consent agenda. And it consists of, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight items this evening. The minutes of the June fifteenth, twenty fifteen, and the July thirteenth, twenty fifteen, special and regular board meetings, personnel adjustments and appointments, bills due and payable, and bills paid between board meetings, a donation from Monsanto for Project Lead the Way, a donation from the Guernsey Charitable Foundation for the East High School Speech and Debate, Big Brothers Big Sisters of Northeast Iowa Memorandum of Understanding, the Job Foundation Iowa Memorandum of Understanding, and the Iowa Jobs for America's Graduates Memorandum of Understanding. Are there any items that anyone would like to have pulled from the consent agenda?
I'll ask that item C, B are removed, that bills due and payable because I'll abstain from voting on that.
Okay. Item C. And items B. Anything further?
E, F, and H.
E, F, and H. Awesome. We're about to spell a word here with all this, so. Okay, so we are left then with items A, D, and G, is that correct? E, F, G, H, okay, pardon me. No, that's okay. Alright, so then all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items A and D, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Do we move? I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you.
With the except, including A and D, I guess.
Of A and D that's left, there we go, thank you, and a second, Sue?
A and D.
Okay, great, then all those in favor of approving items A and D, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bingo.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. We'll move to then personnel appointments and adjustments, which is on page seven, item B.
I just wanted to ask Bev, how are we doing, schools a couple, about three weeks away? So how are we doing filling positions?
We're doing quite well. Since we met last, we've had a half dozen more resignations, but we only have eight positions open right now. So yeah, we're doing quite well. Our principals have been all over it in terms of interviewing folks ahead of time, getting a feel for who's in the field that they might want to invite to be a part of our learning community. So we're doing pretty, pretty well. Got a couple tough positions that are gonna be difficult to fill. If anyone's interested in teaching Introduction to Family and Consumer Science, I'd be open to having a conversation with you. And if there's anyone interested in teaching nine through twelve math, I would too love to speak with you.
Ooh, yes, and I see we have a new position at Hoover in, in eighth grade math. Is that an extra class being added?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Actually, it is, they're going, they're adding additional block time at the, at the middle school at Hoover.
Okay, thank you.
We actually need to get this motion on the table Andrea, I didn't get to it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's alright. So the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed. Can I have?
Some of.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And then a second, thank you. And we already had discussion, is there any further discussion on this for Bev? Great, then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. We'll move on then to bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, which is item C on page eleven. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings.
So moved.
And a second? Great. And any discussion?
And just before discussion, I'll abstain from voting on this matter because as an attorney, I represent a client that's paid by one of the bills.
Anybody have anything further? Then all those in favor of approving item C, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Abstentions?
And I'll abstain, thanks.
Thank you, and chair votes aye, motion carried. Then we'll move on to item E, which is on page twenty-five. And this is a donation from the Guernsey Charitable Foundation for East High School Speech and Debate. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Directors accept and acknowledge the donation in the amount, I'm sorry, that's the Monsanto, I didn't, what am I doing here? Twenty-five, next page, there we go. That the Board of Directors accept and acknowledge the donation in the amount of seven thousand dollars from the Guernsey Charitable Foundation for the East High School Speech and Debate Team.
So moved.
And I'll second.
Great, and I think Tony is here tonight, yay. Just, if you push it, there should, a little green light should come on.
Thank you. Well, the East High Speech and Debate Team would like to try something new, and we are looking at trying to become more competitive. And after a lot of research in surrounding states, we have looked at just south of the Twin Cities, there is a tournament, When the Snow Flies, of course, the next January, that we would come to the board and ask them for approval to possibly take students out of state to this tournament. It is an overnight tournament. The costs are well within the parameters of a regular tournament to travel within our state. And we're looking forward, hopefully, when I wrote the grant to the Guernsey Foundation, I included this as something for us to become more competitive in our debating. Iowa is a great place to do speech and debate. Minnesota's got a little higher ranking, and we'd like to go up there and see what we can do, basically. So I'm trying to put new challenges to keep students interested and build the program. There's also a tournament in Chicago that's a little earlier in the year, in November. And these are invitations only, and we got invitations to both. So our program has grown, we've become a little stronger, and so we might like to do both of those. I have so many variables to consider, students, events, schedules, planning, transportation, that we're not asking yet, but that's why the Guernsey Foundation and the grant that I wrote is a little healthier than usual, and we greatly appreciate them. We'd like to thank Helen Guernsey especially. I got to meet her, and what a nice lady. So in the process of all this, some really cool things have happened, and some new challenges are coming our way. And I may be back to ask you to go out of state with a team. It was the seed that I kinda wanted to plant. So I appreciate you letting me talk tonight. Any questions I can answer for anybody?
I have more of a comment and maybe a request. So I've worked with several of the students that are on the Speech and Debate Team through the TRIO programs and then also through my work with my youth group at church, and you can totally see the growth in them. When you come to ask to go out of town, I would just, if you could bring a couple of them with you, just so we can hear from their perspective, some of the things. I mean, I think the rest of the board members should also get to enjoy that growth that I see in particularly two students that are from the TRIO program, so.
So, well, thank you. And we, on a pamphlet that I created to recruit more kids, you're always recruiting constantly, it's something like this, because it's extracurricular, it's after school, but reading, writing, higher level thinking skills, analysis, debate theory, and speaking on your feet.
Helping speaking.
You have to respond to something, you're a lawyer. You know what I'm talking about. So those are the skills, and they're, they're, they're really interesting to see the light bulb go on. You know, that's the neat part about being an educator, to see that kinda stuff happen in a, in a coaching position like this. And I have lots of good help and, and good support, so it's making our program grow.
And Mr. Dahl, I'd just like to thank you for what you've done with the speech program. It's fantastic, and it's a source of pride for, I know for East, but also for the whole community. So thank you for all you've done and the initiative you've shown. There've been some great kids going through there, and it's been fun to see. When they come to the board meetings, it's always a treat, so thank you for all you've done.
How many students do you have?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six is an agenda, but I counted my three seniors. I didn't wanna give them up yet, but they're not coming back to graduate.
You'll pick up at least three freshmen.
Oh, I think so. Bungar has really sent us a strong group of kids. In our intermediate school debate tournament that we hold for all the intermediate schools here in Waterloo, Bungar won it this year. Hoover had a long run, and I was really proud of them, and Bungar won the tournament this year, so.
And has that been staying pretty consistent the last three, four years? Or is it going up every year, your number?
The very first year that we had it was three years ago, and we were like at forty-six students. And then two years ago, we climbed to about fifty, and this year we were at sixty-eight. And we do that through the, I'm gonna say the wrong program, but if I say tag, well, you know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Talented and gifted, or expanded learning classes. Yeah, ELP, thank you. My acronyms are poor.
I remember tag.
We remember that too.
I remember tag, maybe I'm dating myself, I don't know. With ELP. And the ELP teachers have gotten just better and better at teaching debate. I gave them about twenty days worth of lesson plans, and they rock. That's what I mean, when I get more support from other people, it's not something you can do on your own.
Well, that's great that you've been invited from, from other states to participate. They've got the word out that, pretty good.
Well, we're, we're working on it. We're working on it. So I'm not gonna say we're gonna go there and win or anything, competition is stiff.
But the opportunity is great, yes, and the challenges that presents is what you need.
And we are gonna go there and win.
Inside, I'm saying that, but not on the outside, okay?
Well, we'll look forward to having both those trips on our agendas coming up then this fall, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Tony. Great, thanks again. So the motion is to accept the donation of seven thousand dollars from the Guernsey Charitable Foundation, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. And we'll move on to item F on page twenty-eight. And that recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the Big Brothers Sisters of Northeast Iowa Memorandum of Understanding for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year to be renewed annually in August unless one of the parties informs the other in writing.
Also moved?
A second.
Thank you. And is there discussion? I think Ellen's here, yes. Oh, great.
I wanted to just take a moment tonight to introduce to you Katie Orlando, who is the new executive director of Big Brothers Big Sisters of Northeast Iowa. And we do very much appreciate the assistance that they provide to our students, both with their in-school mentoring program and their community-based program. So I'll let Katie just say a couple words.
Sure. So as Ellen mentioned, my name is Katie Orlando. I'm new to Iowa, but not new to Big Brothers Big Sisters. This is my fourth agency serving in a leadership role with the network. I just moved here over Memorial Day weekend, and I'm really impressed with the agency so far. I was attracted to this area because our agency here in Northeast Iowa is one of the top five in the nation currently for all Big Brothers Big Sisters. And this is a measurement that we determine by the, the impact that we have on the local youth that we're serving. So I don't know if it's acceptable to pass out a handout, but we were recently able to calculate.
Absolutely, we'll take handouts.
Our impact, because some of our youth will take ours, our annual surveys up through July, so these are pretty new numbers. But currently, we're serving a hundred and nineteen youth in Waterloo. Forty-nine youth meet regularly at the schools, once a week, for about thirty to forty-five minutes, depending on how much time the school is able to give us, give our mentors time. And then seventy are meeting out in the community with their mentors for two to four hours, two to four times a month. We ask everyone in our program, all of our youth, we call them littles, our bigs, and our families to commit to at least a year and a half to each other. And the majority of our youth stayed together for much longer, including Ellen's match, I believe. Her little just graduated from high school, and it's largely part because of Ellen and her consistency and her support. But you guys were matched for six, eight, greater than seven. It's a long time. So it's great that we can find some wonderful mentors in the Waterloo and surrounding communities to support our youth. In two thousand and fourteen, in that school year, as you can read for yourself, some of the impacts that I really am excited to report are that sixty-nine percent of our youth have improved their grades this year. And ninety-seven percent of our youth who did not believe they could make it through high school now believe they do. And sixty percent of those youth, sixty-eight percent of those youth also believe that they can go on and successfully graduate from college. So we're excited to see those numbers, and it's largely a part of the mentors instilling those values in these youth. On the back, we have some profiles of some little brothers who have been waiting and ready for their match, their beg to come into their life for over two years. And if any of you might know anyone that has the time to meet either during the school day, once a week, or throughout the school year, it's flexible to your time out in the community, we'd appreciate any help in spreading the word. These boys are really excited to get started, and we're hoping to find their mentor for them soon. If there's any questions, I can.
What you do is very, very important, so thank you.
Agreed.
Yeah, Katie, thank you.
I'm excited to be here, and I'm excited to share these strong impact numbers with you.
Do you have a greater need for male or female bigs, as you call them?
Oh sure, we have a need for all genders. We are able to match little brothers with big sisters. So if we can find mentors, female mentors, that would prefer being matched with a little brother, we can do that. And we also match couples as bigs, so husband, wife, a wife, a wife, a husband, husband, any combination. A father, son, any two family members will match in a couples match with little brothers, while it's a way for us to find more mentors for little brothers. We certainly have a bigger need for males, I think that's just a nationwide piece. Every Big Brothers Big Sisters agency is always doing a male mentor campaign, but we'll, we'll match you with anyone if you're willing to be matched with a little brother. We can, we have somebody on the list that has comparable personality interests and hobbies.
Okay, great.
And people can call?
Yes.
Two, three, five, nine, three, nine, seven?
Yeah.
And then, what, iowabigs.org is the website?
Yep, iowabigs.org.
Okay, great. Thank you for what you do.
Oh, sure.
It's a great service, and a great service to the Waterloo schools.
Yes.
We appreciate all you're doing and keep us posted.
Thank you, it's nice to meet you all, great thanks.
Yeah, and Ellen does a great job.
Yes.
Too, with getting the programs.
She's been a great part of the work with us.
Please keep us posted.
Thanks for being here.
Let us know how we can help, yeah, welcome.
Introduce us. Great. So with that, all those in favor of approving the Memorandum of Understanding with Big Brothers Big Sisters of Northeast Iowa, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. So we'll move on to item G on page thirty-one. And that recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the Job Foundation Memorandum of Understanding for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year to be renewed annually in August unless one of the parties, did I just read? Is that the, informs the other in writing, yep. Job, excuse me.
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Pardon me, I mispronounced that, so. Oh, great, yes.
And I would like to introduce to the board Jennifer Brost, who is in, what's your title? Executive Director of the Job Foundation, which also is a wonderful mentoring organization that benefits many of our students, and she brought a little contingency with her tonight, so.
That's great.
Thank you, is it okay if I invite them up here?
Absolutely, absolutely, and I'll try not to massacre anyone else's name while we're at it, so bring them on up. Yes. Jennifer, will you make sure that that microphone is on? Is the little green light on?
There we go.
Great, there you go, thanks.
Yeah, I'm Jennifer Brost, I'm the executive director and the founder of the Job Foundation. We started in two thousand and six, we got our five oh one C three. Two thousand and seven is when we started working with kids in Waterloo, and we've had quite a lot of fun together. We do a number of things with the kids, they do receive mentoring and tutoring. They have mentors who tutor and go into the schools, and we've been so thankful over the years of how Waterloo has allowed us to do that. And we're just excited about this Memorandum of Understanding because we think it'll help us even have more access, especially to those older kids where we've had a harder time getting their mentors to see them in school. But our main thing is financial success. We want to ensure the financial success of every student. And that looks a little different for our kids who have maybe on the free or reduced lunch versus we now call our volunteers, some of our volunteers have children, and they are able to take financial lessons as well. So last academic school year, we had fifty-two kids who would be what we call CCT children. They receive a conditional cash transfer. And that means that based on their earnings and their good behavior at school, they earn a certain amount of money every grading period, and then they save most of that. And then periodically, such as last Saturday on tax-free holiday, they have shopping days. And that's where they're balancing their Veridian Credit Union checkbooks, and they are making spending plans, and they are learning things like, oops, I took the wrong pair of socks off the thing, and it cost three dollars in the pair I wanted, so I gotta go take it back. Just for example, they learn all kinds of things on there. But we do life together, we really do. So we have today some of our mentors, we have our program director Susan Backus, and also one of our students, and some of our parents, oh yeah, come on up. So I'm just gonna give them a chance to say something to you if they want, okay?
Can I start? Hi, my name is Lorraine Koppich, I'm one of the parents. And I actually, two of my kids mentors is here today, even though my kids are not here. Henry and John, they, they're actually, I have three kids, and they're the mentor of my boys, and it's an exceptional program. They come, they pick up my kids, they do everything from teaching finance to fishing, to learning how to fix go-karts, things of that nature. And even, you know, take all my kids involved, not just the one that they're mentoring, which is awesome, you know? And I enjoy the program because it's also teaching me financially as well. So some of those mistakes I made when I was growing up, I'm actually learning now. And I'm kinda, with my, with my kids' help, with what they're learning, I'm actually learning myself. So it's a wonderful program.
Don't be afraid, don't be afraid.
Hello, my name is Perrine Koppich, and I am a mother of one of the students, Kaid Asia Greer. My daughter is a four point oh student at Carver Elementary School, she is in the seventh grade now. One of the things that I do love about this program is that it's teaching children that your job right now is your education. And the grades that you learn and that you earn in school, you're getting money for that. So it's actually teaching them that eight hours out of the day, when you get, when you're in the real world, that's life. You're working eight hours out of the day. You're earning something eight hours out of the day. Also, it's teaching them that you have to be financially responsible for the things that you want, the things that you need. You have to learn what's important, your needs or your wants. And that's just something that's teaching them that now, because as, growing up, I didn't have that. You know, I thought that, oh, my mom, dad, they'll be okay, you know? Their money is fine, I don't have to worry about things like that, which is now kinda biting me in the butt, so to speak, because I'm playing catch-up. But I'm also learning to financial responsibility as well. And it's something that I want to have stolen upon my daughter, that no matter what, you have to be responsible for yourself, and the real world, it's not easy. And you need to learn these things now, so that a way, when you turn eighteen and you go to college, you know, you have this financial mindset that every, that you have to learn what your wants, what your needs, and things like that. So it's a very, very good program. Thank you.
I'm Susan Backus, I'm the program director, and I started out volunteering with the Job Foundation like two and a half years ago. And when I started, they had just added more children to get twenty students. Now we're up to fifty-two, and we're going to add twenty-three more this fall. So I have a total of seventy-five students, we're really excited about it. But we're really proud of Jennifer, like everything that she's done to build the program thus far, yes, that's true. And of our parents and how willing they are to just accept these lessons and just do life with us. You know, we have the privilege of having the support from the school system. You know, when I get to go into the schools, work with the kids, whether it's reading or just pulling them aside and helping them throughout the day if they're having a difficult day, your staff is really great to work with, but then the parents also back us as well. So it's just a really great program all over us, just really encompasses the whole family, great.
Oh, I do just wanna close in saying, I don't have, I do have some literature we could pass out to you. Our annual report from this last year is at the printers as we speak, so I don't have that. But, you know, Brad McCullough is a great guy, I'm sure you know him. And when we got our data back from him this year, he emailed and said, Job Foundation students are doing incredibly well. He said, yes, they are. And when we looked at, compared to other free and reduced students, our students' grades were seventeen point nine percent higher. They missed forty-eight percent fewer days of school, and they had fifty-nine point six percent fewer behavior referrals. So when she says we're proud of everybody, we really are. I'm just so blessed and so thankful that we get to do this together, and thanks so much for being part of the success that these kids are having.
Thank you for what you're doing. And will you send us a copy of the annual report when it's ready?
Yeah, absolutely, I, I kinda struggle to know exactly who that should be sent to, or who all that should be sent to, should it be sent to everybody on this board, or?
Yeah, just send it to the central office, and we'll distribute it from there.
Okay, central office.
And I just want to say something too, I've known Jennifer for a while, and Jennifer and her husband Mike are really big supporters of kids and families, and so I just really thank them for everything that they do. I, I know that this was kind of a brainchild of yours to, to make happen, and you've done it. So thank you so much for everything.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna add on to what Jane said, that's exactly what I was gonna say, Jennifer's so humble.
Yeah.
Because it's not just Jennifer, but her entire family.
Yes.
Has really, I mean, they're all there, the boys play with all of this, I mean, they're just, it's their family, like the Job Foundation is their family, and it's just amazing.
We're all family.
But not everybody has that, not everybody has that attitude.
We say we're a really special community, all pulling together for the success of all kids.
Yeah, all kids.
And it's, and it's successful, and so it's, it's been an honor to be a part of, a small part of that, and it's, you know, it's amazing to see the kids grow.
Angela's helped out us quite a bit.
Yeah.
I have a question as far as logistics of it, how are the students chosen for the program?
Well, we have certain criteria, they need to be young families, we take all the children in the home. So we say no kid in the home can be above fifth grade when they begin. Then they need to live within the district guidelines for the schools that we are targeting. Right now, and it will continue to be this year, that's Irving, Cunningham, Highland, and Lincoln, okay? And then we have references from the, the family support workers at those schools. They usually give us a list, and then also, we put the word out to our families, and sometimes they've got friends and family members who meet that criteria, and if so, they get the applications. It's first come, first served. As you can imagine, there's a great demand to get into our program.
But, and they have to be on free and reduced?
Oh, free and reduced lunch, that's right, when they begin. Now, we do have a few that over the years have not, they aren't on that anymore. Our thing is we don't want to punish any child for their parent's success, but when they begin, yes, they're all free and reduced.
And Jennifer, it says that you'll be adding Lowell in the, not, not this coming year, but the early round.
Right, strategic plan is calling for the addition of Lowell. And by our fifth year, actually, a cohort out of North Cedar, Cedar Falls.
That'd be great.
But yeah, we'll continue to expand if you, I don't know, see that strategic plan executive summary? I don't know who it went to, I can't, I can't remember who we sent it to. But, you know, within a couple years, we're hoping to be up to two hundred kids, so. We'll just keep going.
That's outstanding.
But it's all based on community support, we don't have any government grants or anything, so.
Well, thank you very much, on behalf of all of us for what you do.
And thank you to all of you.
And I have one more question.
Oh, one, sorry.
Do you have like a curriculum that you use that would be made available for students? I'm, I'm just thinking, I know some students that maybe aren't on free and reduced, but this would be highly beneficial for.
Yes, absolutely, the best way to do that would be to sign up as a volunteer. Like I said, if you, if you are wanting to bring your own family in as a volunteer, then those children have the opportunity to come to lessons as such. We follow jumpstart standards in terms of the curriculum, but of course, there's no real good. But of course, there's no real good prepackaged way to deal with it. A lot of the stuff that we feel we need to teach isn't necessarily part of a curriculum, such as payday loans. And, you know, some of that stuff isn't necessarily taught there. Or the dangers of owning a pet that you can't afford. Those things aren't necessarily in a curriculum. So we do a combination of pulling stuff here and there to meet those criteria of jumpstart, but then also some stuff that we just see would be helpful.
Thank you for all you're doing, and Jennifer to you for everything you've done. And seeing this over from 2006, I didn't realize it had gone back that far. But I'm sure it's been a tremendous amount of work during that time. But, and thank you to all the volunteers as well, to the families, to the students as well. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions before I start talking again?
No.
Great. All right then, well, all those in favor of approving the Job Foundation memorandum of understanding for 2015-2016, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Then we'll move on to item H, which is on page thirty-four. And that recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the IJAG memorandum of understanding for the 2015-2016 school year at a cost of thirty-six thousand dollars.
I'll so move.
In a second?
Second.
Yeah, sure. I'm not sure. The IJAG program, that's the acronym for Iowa's, Iowa Jobs for America's Graduates. And it is a program we've actually had in our district. We only currently have it at East High. We are looking at, you know, potential expanding, but we have really taken the feeling that we wanna make sure that it's, it's successful before you grow it too, too big. And so we are expanding this year. The cost for one program is eighteen thousand dollars. And that really funds a portion of the teacher. And the rest is funded through state funds, through a lot of private volunteer, or private donations. And so we're going to bring that to ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. The program we currently have working right now is, is eleventh and twelfth. And we'll be bringing it to the ninth and tenth. And it, we're, the program is designed to serve and work with students, kinda mentor and work with students who have some risk factors that could keep them from graduating, could keep them from being successful. And we have had just amazing luck. And really, it is, it is just due to the students, the administration, and the teacher that works with the, with the students in the class. And so it's just been really great. We have been, as many of you know, we've been working really hard on graduation rate. And when I looked at graduation rates for the IJAG program, the seniors who graduate, last year it was a hundred percent of the students in the program graduated. Before that, it was nine, the year before was ninety-six percent of the seniors in the program. And I realized that it's a smaller group of students. They're working with fifty eleventh and twelfth graders. So about half of them are seniors. But it's just, it's just a great program. And again, it really goes back to the, the teacher really makes that program. I mean, it's a woman that works with the eleventh and twelfth and will bring, be bringing in Mike Robinson to work with the ninth and tenth graders. But it's just, it's a great program. And it's a, a, a pretty, it's a nice amount for what we get from that. It's not, it's not, it's pretty conservative, I think, so.
And Jane, my question, the only reason why I wanted, the main reason why I wanted the poll is just, just to talk about, you touched on it, the expansion, to make sure that it's accessible to our other high schools as well.
Yeah. Yeah, currently, right now, again, it's, it's funded through a portion by us, but it certainly costs more than eighteen thousand dollars for, for a teacher and the program. And they do a lot of field trips or visits to businesses, industry. And so the private donations are funded. I don't know, I just saw the other day how many actual IJAG programs there are in the state of Iowa. And it's, I'm gonna say it looked, I'm trying to picture the dots on the map, but I would say around twenty, twenty maybe, maybe a few more. And so we are gonna have another one here. And so I think we, you know, we continually look at serving where the need is, you know? And so as the need, as we're, we have funders and as we have programs, then we, I think we look at expanding. So this is the first time, and there aren't that many ninth, tenth programs around the state. And so this is one of the newer programs. And so we're really excited to do that because you can, it's kind of that holistic, comprehensive, ninth through twelfth grade that spans. It's a great thing. I think it's.
Anything else? Great. All right then, all those in favor of approving the IJAG memorandum of understanding, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Well, we got through the consent agenda, so we can move on to the next item on our agenda, which is item I. It's on page forty-three. And while, I think we've got, I think Larry's here. I think I saw him back there. And Amy's back there too. Great. Well, while they're coming forward, I will get the motion on the table there. The Board of Education approved the district developed Special Education Service Delivery Plan.
I'll so move.
In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Good evening, you two.
Aye.
How are ya?
Great.
Good. Will you tell us a little bit about this?
So the, our special education plan is, you know, it's a document that will spell out that we will serve all of our students. You know, from general education environment to, you know, all the way down to a hospital, homebound, whatever the need for that child is. Our plan's developed by a combination of administration, parents, and teachers, along with the AEA staff. And the state does give us some guidelines that we must meet as we write the plan. There is provisions in the plan that if a teacher or a parent comes forward and has a question in regards to a teacher's caseload and preventing them from effectively teaching a child or their son or daughter, there's kind of a process that we go through to review that process. And eventually, it may end up with Jane. But there's many steps in between to look at those caseloads, to make sure we're providing the services for our kids.
Great. And I just wanna point out that, I know our viewers at home don't have it, but there's a nice letter in our board exhibit from AEA 267 commending our district in putting together this plan. And, you know, they just say that "the work in the committee and others for their dedication to meet student needs and innovations to accomplish this." So thank you both for championing this. And I know it's something that we have to do, but they didn't have to write such a nice letter to us than they did. So just wanna bring that to light.
Yeah, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt. And it is something that is required by law to be rewritten or revised every, every five years, but we do look at it annually, right? And make changes, and we certify that with the state every, every year.
There's kind of a provision. We have a state report that we get each year. We review that. We look at what, you know, what, we're, graduation rates, one of them, least restrictive environment, and then our achievement data. So we continually look at those. If we do need to revise our plan, then we would revise it before the fifth year if we needed to.
What big changes were from 2009 to now? Anything substantial, or?
I wouldn't say substantial. I'd say the prior, the prime things that the committee looked at was, I was a teacher at that time, on the committee the last time. And our language and our service delivery, although we've always had the continuum of services, the same continuum of services, because we provide the full continuum here, our language and just our increased access to least restrictive environment for students has really changed. And so we were, we kinda, and we adopted some different terms too for our teachers. We call them instructional strategists now versus special education teachers because we really are focused on what their role is in the classroom, especially the general education classroom. So we took that same continuum of services that we've had, but we, I think we more clearly defined it. And we had to change some of the language to be a lot more representative of the collaborative culture we have within general ed and special ed versus what we had, you know, for sure, five years ago.
Okay.
So I think that was one major thing. And then the second thing was that we, we totally changed our review of those teacher caseloads. We had a rubric before, just a rubric, that we evaluated the number of students that a teacher could effectively serve on their caseload. And by looking at some other districts' plans and things, we saw that besides just looking at a individual student rubric, it was good to look at the caseload overall. And so we added five additional questions to review, along with the individual student caseloads. So it kinda makes a more comprehensive review, a better picture of what that teacher's responsibilities are, to not overload them.
Mm-hmm, correct. Okay, thank you.
No, Andrea kinda asked a question that I had too, but I read through it. It was an understandable report. And I had a lot of kind of aha moments reading through it. Things I had seen, I guess, in practice, but I didn't know necessarily what they were called or kinda why they fit in. So I thought it was, it seemed very, very helpful to read. Because it was kind of the general framework and kind of the theory or the understanding, kind of the general goals, but then also some specific stuff on the rubric and all that. I thought it was very well-written and understandable. So thank you. And thanks to the committee as well, and even the parents and everybody else that were, that was involved in putting this together. So thank you all.
I turned my mic off. Anything further? Great. Well, thank you both. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm gonna get back to my motion here. So all those in favor of accepting the delivery system for special education and instructional services, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Great. So we'll move on to item J, which is on page sixty-six. And this is a textbook adoption for the high school career and technical education programs. I see that Crystal's coming up, so I will get that motion on the table. The Board of Education approved the adoption of the Career and Technical Education textbook in the amount of seven thousand one hundred six dollars.
I'll so move. I'll second.
Thank you both. Great. Crystal?
Last board meeting, I was up here along with Dr. Debbie Lee, and we presented a number of textbooks that we were adding to our current technical programs. And this is just one more additional textbook that our industrial technology teachers really thought would be important with the new Intro to Industrial Technology course that goes over manufacturing, automotive, engineering, and then construction. We had talked about a number of different things. Could we use some of the books that we are getting to help supplement with some of that instruction? But they really felt that this textbook is very general and will give students an idea of just general car maintenance, upkeep, and repair, rather than diving in deep. And that's the whole purpose of those intro courses that we have now with the pathways to give them. Here's an overview, and if you wanna dig in deeper, then you need to take that career pathway. And so they just felt like if they had used their automotive textbook, which actually is a Hawkeye course, it would be a little bit too deep for students who just wanted that general overview. Eighty-five.
And do the additions change each year? Or is this gonna be able, I see it's a third edition?
It's a third edition. This is the newest one that just came out. And so normally, I believe what our protocols are brought around every five to seven years. So we would keep with this one for a while.
Okay, great.
Crystal, just in regards to the Career and Tech Ed textbooks, I know last month we had some, is this, are we, is this the last one that we're gonna see? Or do we have more?
There will probably be some more. We have a lot of new courses this year, and so that means a lot of new textbooks. And so we'll have some second semester that teachers are still looking at. We're pretty sure that's what they wanna go with. But before we go forward, we really need to make sure that for second semester, those are the books they wanna go with.
Great. Okay. Anything else for Crystal? Thank you. So with that, all those in favor of approving the adoption of the Career and Tech Ed textbook, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. And that brings us to our board policy changes, which is item K on page sixty-eight. We will not be taking any action on this this evening. But I see that Tara Thomas is here this evening to give us a little update.
Thank you, Shanley. So this is changes to the high school graduation policy. And Dr. Debbie Lee and Cora Turner worked on these proposed changes that you see before you, specifically around a three-tiered approach to graduation requirements. The three diplomas being traditional, honors, and core. So it was presented to the committee, the policy review committee, and now comes before you tonight. Any questions? They would be happy to address.
Tara, can you just, this is a change from what we currently have. Can you give us a little background as to why that change would be necessary? And, because I think it's a good thing, so.
And why don't we have Cora Turner and Debbie Lee come up too?
I can't see behind everybody, so.
Yep, nope, that's good. I think they can share a little bit more about how this really even came to be. So we did a lot of exploring, didn't we?
Doesn't have to be three hours, but just.
Yeah.
I wanna keep you here.
Hello.
Good evening.
First of all, I'd like to, the two counselors, Rebecca and me, and the two standup, and also Mindy, they've been involved with this. And I just wanna say thank you for your support, for also saying it's important for the district to move forward on our policies. Debbie, why don't you kinda talk about why we're here and what we're doing?
I would love to talk about that. Cora has had a vision, not an hour, right. Cora's had a vision and it came to me, and I fully supported that. And so we put our heads together and said, "What can we do to provide our students with a differentiated pathways for our diploma?" We wanted to, first and foremost, was balancing what's good for kids with maintaining the integrity of the diploma, which is very close to my heart. I want the Waterloo diploma to have incredible meaning and much integrity when we give that out to students. It has to mean something in the community and beyond our community. So that was really important to us. The other thing was, is we felt that if we're going to differentiate that, we wanted to go both ways away from the standard. So to alleviate a little bit of what our students might need in support one way, but also challenging our students who would prefer an honors diploma and would go the opposite way with that. And I felt that was very, very important, honoring those students who are the majority of our students who will go down that standard pathway. And then looking at what are the needs that we can meet on both ends of that continuum. So again, we put our heads together. We came up with this. We worked with Cory Kelchon, worked with us a great deal. We vetted this. We really worked very hard at what would it look like. Cory did an incredible amount of work with connecting with the DE and other districts. So she did a lot of that. I came up with, well, what would it might look like? And we did some wordsmithing on it together, and this was the result of that. I remember sitting in my living room at one point and thinking, "If we can do this for our students, it can make a profound impact on students' lives." So thinking about that and thinking about what we were doing, I went back through it several different times and really thought about it deeply at many different times, because I knew that it would hopefully go far into the future and really offer our students these different pathways for graduation. I think the one key piece here that is incredibly creative for us to have come up with, in some ways, you kinda wonder, well, where'd that idea come from? But to be able to deviate out of our standard diploma for either the core or the advanced, it has to be application and approval-based. We did not in any way want to think or offer an opportunity for any of our students to think, "This is the easy way. I'm gonna do it this way," in an easy way. That is not what we wanted. It truly is to meet differentiated needs of students. So we shaved a little off those electives in that area. All three of our diploma pathways do meet the Iowa law. That is four, three, 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 four years of English, three years of science, social studies, and math. So we maintained that. We wanted to. We were not gonna shortchange anybody on that. And again, the encouraging thing is we're not gonna, at the onset of ninth grade, start kids down any one of those pathways. We, well, I should say, everybody starts on the standard pathway. It's not until the end of their sophomore year, beginning of their junior year, or later, that we take a look at them if there is a need there or if they want to apply for either the core or the honors.
Cory, can you add anything to that?
And I think that's important work for our counselors. That's why we wanted to engage them on the onset of this, so that they would be aware of what our expectations are as a district. By them, at the end of their sophomore year, understanding and working with us from the beginning, those high expectations are still there for all students. As she indicated, it's an application process. It's just not gonna be an easy way to get to one segue or the other. The expectations are, first of all, we all meet the standard core, she said. It's excitement for me. I've been in the district for a while. I've seen students who want to graduate. We want now to give them a different opportunity, a different pathway to be successful. And that's what it's about for each of you. And that's what it's about for each of us.
And I want to just tag on to this. I really appreciate the work of Debbie and Cora and the counselors because they, they, they didn't start completely from scratch, but they did, they did a great job of checking out other districts that had programs and different pathways. And I think, I'm going to say, I think that yours is extremely well-done. And I would say honestly, it's probably, it's the best policy that I've seen in any district. But there are other districts that do something like this. You know, just, just to our west, Cedar Falls has a, has this type of a thing. I, I think this one is a little more comprehensive, which I'm excited about. The ladies worked with Urbendale and West Des Moines and a variety of districts to see what they had, to see what would be right for us. They customized it and made it, made it fit our kids. And we've really been, you've, many of you have heard me say many times, we are really moving away from that one size, one-size-fits-all. This is what we have. Take it or leave it. Because we know kids are, kids have different needs. Staff has different needs. Administrators have different needs. And so I think this is a really great step. And so I know it's just a first reading today, but we would encourage you to ask any questions that you might have. I know Sue serves on policy committee, so she's seen it and had a little chance to, to look at that. But, you know, thank you very much for that, and we'll open it up for any questions that you might have.
Well, and on that, I had spoken with Debbie about the IB and having that diploma and that. And it wouldn't be included in here is how, you know, it would work out. But I did have a couple of questions. I was not able to make the actual meeting. I emailed. And would the diploma look different for each student?
At this time, it's not that the diploma would look different. Each diploma would state that you are Waterloo Community Schools graduate. There may be a difference for the honors diploma. There may be a certain symbol on there to denote that you're an honor. We're not that far in the actual paperwork part of it, but there could be a possibility, just especially at that higher level. But each diploma would state it's a Waterloo Community Schools diploma, and they'd have the opportunity to go on to higher education or wherever else they choose to do in life.
Right. I just think it would give them an ownership to their diploma. You know, this is, I was in the honors diploma. I was in the traditional. But then, yeah.
A seal.
Like the students literally were during graduation with the different.
Right. Exactly. And just so that they, like a college graduation, you know, College of Engineering, you know, I mean, you could do that. But my other concern that I had slightly is our, I know counseling has been somewhat of a difficult area as far as getting time enough to get with each student, to get them on the right track, to. I'm speaking previously with the academies and that type of thing. And so I'm just wondering if this is going to tax our counseling staff too much? And the staffing in the counseling area, has that been looked at or addressed to be more specified like this is going to be?
At this point, you know, we have not actually looked at any additions or anything like that or talked about it. But I can share with you the hours that our counselors have put in, just through our excitement. We've already went back and looked at 427 students to see where they can fall in the process if this is passed by our board of directors, when it's passed by our board of directors, moving forward with us accomplishing this task. So it may be something that may be a little taskmaster in the beginning, but the success rate of our students, we can't claim that because it's excitement and we want to see our kids graduate. If we need to make a change, we're willing to make the change.
Right. And are you guys high school counselors or middle school? High school? Because. I think we really would need to get the middle school on board with this because even though it's not starting to be up to speed on everything, like additional training and stuff, because I see that's where the void tends to happen, so.
Well, we also had the high school counselors in when we, the first version of this. We brought the principals in this summer and the counselors, and we said, here's our thinking. Punch holes in it, help us get it right. They had great input and helped us with that. And at that time, knowing how they go through, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but looking at those courses and their transcripts and making sure that the seniors, they really do review those on an individual basis. So there was nothing said at any of, at that particular meeting or beyond that that indicated they were concerned about that particular workload. They were, and maybe we hadn't thought about it by then, but they were very excited about it.
One thing I challenge is that we have a great technology department. So I'm going to see if there's a way they can do that credit audit for us and then generate it back. Say some of that manual work that we have to do. That's a challenge, but, you know, I think they would be, take that up and help us out. So that's first of all.
In addition, we have, we will be making a plan with Tara about communicating this with parents, with students, because we do want it to start this next year with the community. So I had already talked to Tara about that and said, hey, we need some help with that. So she will be on, is on board with that, and we'll make that happen.
I was incredibly excited to see this and read through it. I thought it was a very well-thought-out policy. And it, I, it makes just a ton of sense to me. On the honors part, but then also on the core part. There were safeguards in there that I hadn't even thought about, but the fact that it's an application process for either of the non-standard diplomas and also for the core diploma, that it's not applicable for early graduation as well. It's just, it's only for your four-year cohort. It made a ton of sense. And so taking all the other school districts in Iowa that have something like this and putting that into a policy that works for us, it was great. So I commend everybody. Thank you for all your work on this.
It's exciting.
There are, and there are just a couple wording changes that we actually found after. So that, you'll, you'll see that reflected in the second reading. So we didn't reprint. A couple of them were found just a little bit later on Friday.
That was email. Yeah. There was an email that went on Friday.
Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Great.
Yeah, I, I'll talk about that. So, all right. Well, thank you both. I appreciate that. We can move on then to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a couple things. We are back in the swing. For some reason, when you flip the calendar to August, you all of a sudden have a little bit of excitement slash panic. And so we are, we are there right now, and we are in the full swing of summer school for our elementary students, which is, is going really well. We had a couple little, you know, busing things and, and a couple, a couple little bumps in the road. And I guess that's probably expected, normal. I say that a lot. It's normal and it's expected. So, so that's, that's going. We are in our first day, or actually, it's the third day out of four for our administrative retreat. And so we met today, and Dr. McNulty is, is kind of heading that up. And so that's been a really, it's a great thing. It's a full, it's just a very exhausting experience, but it's really great work. And so we, we leave very tired, which I think is, is appropriate. I would just remind, I think that's appropriate, you know? Getting your money's worth. It's, it's good. It's really good. I would like to remind parents, too, that registration is coming up this week. And I think we've, I think Tara and her department have done a great job of making sure people know about that. Some people will not have to report because they've done pre-registration and they just can file or do the fees, the lunch fees online. So I just sent my husband a text the other day and said, don't forget to put money in their account. So just, so the dates, I can give those to you, just a reminder. Wednesday from 12 o'clock noon until 7:30 PM. So that'll give, you know, if you get off work at five, you still have time to get there. And then thirty, Thursday is 7:30 to 3:00. So if you, we try to provide a morning option, an afternoon option, and an evening option. So hopefully that will work for people. And please, call us with any questions. Cora's department is also exhausted, aren't you? It's a lot of work right now, especially with boundary changes and that kind of thing. It's just, it's, it's, it's an exciting time, too. We've seen lots and lots of new families, so that's exciting. Then I wouldn't, I didn't want to finish without saying, the first day of school is August 31st. I think everyone knows that, but Cunningham's first day is August 24th. They start just a little bit earlier, and teachers return on, all except for Cunningham returns a little bit earlier, but teachers return on August 26th. And then just one final thing, and actually is not necessarily school-related, but as a mom of two young students, I have, we've been very busy with ball, T-ball, baseball, those kind of things. And it just, as, as I'm out there, I just wanted to give a shout-out to the city of Waterloo and the leisure services program and all of the other sports programs, and to the parents who, who volunteer. One of my sons, his coach, was gone this week, and so they asked for volunteers, and my husband, and I said, sure. We don't, I don't know baseball, but I know kids, so I can help out. And I just was reminded how much work that is to work with, you know, all the little, little bodies that are trying to learn how to, how to run from first to second. And the funniest thing, and you've all seen it, is they, they swing, and if they happen to hit the ball, they just stand there in amazement and watch, and they don't know where to go. And so we always have to say, run, run, put down the bat and run. So it's just a great thing. So I just, I think it's kind of in that realm of it takes a village to, to raise a child. And I just am so pleased that we have so many people who are willing to step up and do that. So thank you for that.
Yay, summer. So, all right, I always start on this side. So I'm going to start with board reports, and I'm going to go with Angie tonight. You go first.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I was just going to, Jane said that it takes a village. And I know with my goddaughter who just graduated and seeing Rebecca in the, in the audience, and she wouldn't have graduated without her, I just want to acknowledge her because she are part of, I mean, all the teachers out here, you're part of that village that helps those kids. I mean, Mariah was a freshman in December and graduated from high school with her cohort. So that's amazing. It literally took a village to get her there. Sorry, Mimi, for saying your name out loud.
Sue?
I wanted just a clarification on the registration. I had a parent call me, a current student, do they have to bring a utility bill? A current student does also. Verification of address. Okay.
That's an annual, annual requirement.
Annual. Okay. I just wanted to verify. That's what I thought.
It's a great question.
A couple of people had asked me that. And just, school supply lists are out in the stores, so you can go get an early start in your school supplies. And just, a lot of the bands are already practicing. West High and East High are practicing already, and a lot of the sports teams start already this week. So if you're interested in a sport, please call, you know, high school. Call your athletic office and get that information because the sports are begun. That's it.
Mike?
And I would just like to quickly thank, not to single out board members, but thank Sue Flynn, who's here tonight, for being willing to serve again on the school board. The signup period for school board elections came last week and, or I guess a week and a half ago. And I also want to thank Lyle Schmidt. He's out of town right now and not able to be here, being willing to serve again. And Jesse Knight, I know, who is willing to serve as well, is very excited and hopeful as well. I think he would do a great job, and I haven't met Rhonda yet, but I've heard great things. So thanks to all four of them for being willing to serve on the board.
Thanks, Mike. And Andrea?
I, I don't really have anything, except I think the board's going to be continuing to be very collaborative and with the interests of the students in mind.
That's what it's all about?
Yes, it is.
So, and I have no report this evening because everybody took my stuff. That's why, and you go last. Everybody takes your, everybody takes your materials. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And a second? Do you need anything?
I just want to announce one other thing. If you're new to our community and enrolling in Waterloo schools, you don't have to go to different locations. Come to the, our administration building will do the enrollment for all students at this location, new to the district. Thank you.
Thanks, Cora. And is that from 8:30 to 5:00, pretty much? Is that the?
Honest with you, it's any time. We just want you to get in and get your student registered. We've served about fifteen, sixteen families today. So we just want new students to enroll here at the central administration office.
And Cora, that means even if they have an elementary and a middle and a high school student.
They can do it all.
Everybody come here.
One location.
One-stop shopping. Right.
All right. Well, then, all those in favor of dismissal, I mean, I'm sorry, adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.